...its formalities. And then thirty-minute presentation after Jay explains it, then, uh, since it's an L.R., recommendation, but you guys think we can just go over that and open the floor for debate questions by the senators. You go that way. Okay. Uh, got all the thirteen members here. Okay, we'll start the afternoon session at two fifty. And then, at this time, according to the agenda, the other business is, at this time, it'd be in the L.R., and it will be introduced by the legislature. So, a legislative resolution titled, "A Resolution of the Crow Tribal Legislature to Reorganize and Consolidate the Legislative Branch Committees," and at this time, before recognized, is Senator Leroy Not Afraid from La Crosse to read this into the record.
Shall I read that over?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. At this time, "A Resolution of the Crow Tribal Legislature to Reorganize and Consolidate the Legislative Branch Committees."
Close to the top. Okay, second, need a second. Second by Senator Pretty Paint, proceed.
Legislative findings, whereas the Crow Tribal Legislature has the power and duty under Article Five, Section Two of the Crow Tribal Constitution, and to promulgate and adopt resolutions in accordance with the Constitution and federal laws for the governance of the Crow Tribe, and whereas, in accordance with Article Five, Section One of the Crow Tribal Constitution, the legislature shall operate as a separate and distinct branch of the Crow Tribal Government, and shall exercise a separation of powers from the other branches of tribal government. And whereas, in accordance with Article Five, Section Three of the Crow Tribal Constitution, the meetings of the legislature shall be conducted in accordance with the most current version of Roberts Rules of Order and any rules of conduct duly adopted by the legislature. And whereas, the legislature has the constitutional authority to provide for the establishment of branch rules and policies governing its review of proposed legislation and other matters requiring legislative action. And whereas, under House Rule Ten H and branch policy contained in Legislative Resolution Number Ten dash zero nine and Legislative Resolution Number Ten dash twenty, all proposed legislation, legislative resolutions, and nominations subject to confirmation by the legislature are assigned to the appropriate legislative branch committee and upon introduction for review, an official recommendation to the full legislature. And whereas, under House Rule Nineteen, the legislature may while in session refer proposed legislation, legislative resolutions, or reports to the relevant committee for further discussion and committee action. And whereas, the legislative branch committees also report on committee activities to the full legislature during each quarterly session, and whereas, the legislature established four standing committees in two thousand and two, each with specific areas of jurisdiction and oversight which operated under unique bylaws, and whereas, the total number of standing legislative branch committees increased over time to sixteen by two thousand and ten. And whereas, upon review of the number of legislative branch committees and in consideration of issues which have arisen, including overlapping jurisdiction, scheduling difficulties, and meeting efficiency, it has been determined that the consolidation of committee jurisdiction in order to reduce the number of standing committees to six is in the best interests of the legislature and the Crow Tribe. And whereas, the legislature now seeks to reorganize and consolidate the committees of the legislative branch for the purpose of increased efficiency and effectiveness in review of proposed tribal legislation, legislative resolutions and other proposed legislative actions, and for enhanced oversight of all matters of importance to the Crow Tribe and the Crow Reservation. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Crow Tribal Legislature in special session. Section One, repeal of prior committee resolutions. All legislative resolutions establishing or amending committees or subcommittees of the legislature and their bylaws or jurisdiction are hereby repealed, repealed and rescinded. Section Two, establishment of six standing committees. Jurisdiction, there is hereby established the following six standing committees of the legislature with such jurisdiction as described herein. Economic Development Committee, end quote, all matters related to tribal and Crow Reservation economic development, including business and commercial codes, banking, gaming, and tribal business enterprises. Quote, Health and Human Services Committee, end quote, all matters related to community health and social well-being, including healthcare, education, and moment, veterans affairs, community programs, and cultural resources. Quote, Infrastructure Committee, end quote, all matters related to public infrastructure, including service utilities, housing, energy production and distribution, telecommunications, and public transportation. Quote, Judicial Committee, end quote, all matters related to tribal jurisdiction and sovereignty, law enforcement, government structure, and legal rights, including tribal courts, police, civil liberties, probate, elections, limited waivers of sovereign immunity, codes of ethics, administrative procedures, and treaty rights. Quote, Natural Resources Committee, end quote, all matters related to the regulation, development, and use of natural resources and the environment, including leasing laws, surface land use, air and water, fire management, rangeland, timber, minerals, fish and wildlife. End quote, Revenue Committee, end quote, all matters related to tribal revenues and expenditures, including annual tribal budgets, fiscal management, and reporting, revenue-sharing agreements, taxation and review and modification of branch budget. Provided that nothing in this, nothing in this resolution shall be read to modify or amend any committee jurisdiction as established by tribal statutory law or tribal joint action resolution, except where such jurisdiction and oversight may be vested in a legislative branch committee which is being dissolved by this resolution. Such jurisdiction and oversight shall be vested in the appropriate committee identified and established by this resolution. Section Three, Uniform Committee Bylaws Committee Officers. Each of the six standing committees shall operate pursuant to a uniform set of written bylaws which shall be developed and promulgated by the branch officers prior to the effective date of this resolution. Each committee shall be presided over by a committee chairperson who shall be elected by the committee membership. Each committee shall also elect a committee vice chairperson who shall preside over the meetings of the committee by delegation or upon the unavailability of the chairperson. All elected senators shall be eligible for membership in all committees. Section Four, Special Committees. The legislature may establish by legislative resolution special committees for such purposes and for such duration as deemed necessary and proper. Section Five, Official Branch Policy, Effective Date. This resolution upon its effective date shall be considered official legislative branch policy, and a copy shall be provided to the Crow Tribal Executive Branch in public notice made to the Crow Tribal General Council as soon as practical. This resolution shall take effect on December second, two thousand and thirteen. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Senator Not Afraid. At this time, uh, we'll, we'll go to the thirty-minute presentation by a sponsor. And so, before I ask Jay to come here, we'll, this is an L.R., and Resolution of the Crow Tribal Legislature to Reorganize and Consolidate the Legislative Branch Committees. So at this time, Jay, you want to come up to the podium and, and make a presentation?
Short version. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Secretary, members of the body. I think we have one General Counsel member in attendance. This has been a topic of discussion for some time, but it's normally been coffee cup conversation informal, and it is now before the full body for your consideration. This resolution would do a number of things. Most importantly, you would be consolidating the functions of the committees from the current number of sixteen down to six, and clarifying jurisdiction. The resolution recognizes that there is some overlap of jurisdiction which has not made it easy for the secretary to assign proposed bills, joint action resolutions, and legislative resolutions. Because of that fact, there have been many dual assignments. In addition to the reduction of the number of committees, which would, of course, clarify jurisdiction, in my view, it enhanced the prestige of being a committee officer, a committee chair. What this would do, in addition, as far as changing the current branch policy, would be to create a uniform set of bylaws. The legislature would be delegating that function to the branch officers. They would provide a uniform set of bylaws that all of the committees would follow. Each committee will have the same operational law governing its procedure, and the only difference between the committees will be their respective areas of oversight as set out in Section Two of the proposed legislative resolution. Economic Development, Health and Human Services, Infrastructure, Judicial, Natural Resources, and Revenue. These committees are not listed in any particular order except alphabetical, and you can see that each one is of extraordinary importance. I asked Leslie earlier what she thought maybe the most important committee would be, given the consolidation of role, and it's tough to make that determination because each of these committees are, have so much jurisdiction and so much importance. It's hard to really single one out. This proposed legislative resolution is something, in my judgment, it would benefit the legislative branch in our operation. Having six standing committees with flexibility for the establishment of special committees in the future, if the legislature deems it necessary, I think is certainly a step in the right direction. There are, uh, none of these committees specifically referred to the personnel function of the Personnel Committee, which was, of course, not one of the original four. The reason is, the feeling is that the function of the Personnel Committee could perhaps best be exercised by the branch officers. The Speaker and the Secretary have that role day-to-day in the oversight, particularly the Speaker with regard to staff, and when it comes to development of personnel policies, revisions to our policy manual, the Speaker and the Secretary together can, we feel, make, make that proposal to the full body from time to time for those types of amendments. Uh, Mr. Speaker, when, if, when the time is appropriate, I can certainly answer any questions any of legislators may have, but basically, in a nutshell, that's it, knocking it down from sixteen to six, no more secretaries, replacing them with vice chairs. The bylaws will go into more depth, detail. The senators can take a look at the six committees that would be established by this resolution. Um, I guess one, the thing I'll conclude with that I wanted to touch on was, the language in Section Two, the last paragraph provided that, we do have CLBs out there in some code language that refers to specific committees of this branch. For example, the, uh, the Fiscal Management Act, for example, references the Revenue Committee. So what that proviso is saying is that the committee jurisdiction that exists under statutory law or tribal joint action resolutions, um, that isn't extinguished, but if the committee that's referenced in the statute is not one of these six, its jurisdiction would be fit into one of these six by the operation of this L.R. You can look at each one of these six paragraphs, and you can see where each one has a very broad covering terms of issues, and whatever issue is under the jurisdiction of a committee that may be referenced in a CLB or jar, if it's not one of these six, it's going to be captured by the language of one of these six, and that's where that jurisdiction would, would vest. So, just to use a quick example, the Gaming Committee is not one of these six. We may have a tribal law on the books that references the Gaming Committee, that, that function now is going to be exercised by the Economic Development Committee, in which gaming issues or matters are, are, are under the jurisdiction of. So, with that, Mr. Speaker, I think that's probably about the shortest version I can give, uh, to give it justice as far as what this L.R. would do. This is one of the most important L.R.s that I think that would be passed during my term here at the legislature, so I, I think it would be a step in the right direction. When the time's appropriate, I'll be happy to ask or answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, floor recognizes Secretary Okrow.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body, uh, little of ever. You know, um, this issue was brought up a long time ago, probably in my, uh, just before Ron Aronson left. Um, I'm not saying it's because of him that we're doing it, but he raised a, a very important issue was, there are so many committees, and I explained this earlier, uh, during the recess, uh, there are so many committees, it's all watered down, and, uh, being a chair doesn't really mean anything because everybody's a chair after a while. I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody, but, uh, that way, when we consolidate it, it's just like, you know, like that old analogy, uh, you put something together and it gets, becomes stronger. It's, it's something similar to that. Like, when we first got in with Martin and Manuel, we're kind of in that same group where we first, when we first got in, um, we, we only had these few committees at that time, and we functioned normally. We had a lot of committee meetings at that time, and since then, I felt like we kind of slacked off. I don't know if it was due to the past few years and the situations that, that happened in the past, but for some reason, it's like we're, um, very inactive, to put it quite frankly. But now, I think if we consolidate these committees into what it used to be, um, I think it would function better. Uh, Genie brought up that question, well, what about, uh, a certain issue that comes up and where there's, everything goes into that one committee, for example, Health and Human. The Health and Human Chair has oversight on that issue, but those committee members are there to help that chairman, uh, as I said, stated earlier. They're there for a reason to be on that committee. It's not just to sit in the committee and listen to all the issues and vote on it, but it's to participate and put your input and be active and spirited. Let's say, for example, I'm not in, I'm in a judicial committee, but if there was an issue on that judicial, uh, issue in that committee that I wanted to spearhead, it doesn't mean I have to be chairman of that committee to spearhead it. Let's say, for instance, the, there's an issue that's coming up that I'll probably be working on is that child restraint law. You see a lot of kids running around without seat belt restraints and getting hurt. You know, some people might not agree with me, but I believe it's, it's a safety issue that needs to be brought up, and let's say, I'm not in that committee, but, I mean, I am in that committee, but I'm not the chair, but that doesn't mean I can't spearhead it, I can't introduce it. And I think that's what we need to start learning is that being a member of that committee means you participate and not just sit there and listen to the issues, but to be active in that committee. Uh, anyway, that's an example, uh, but I'll just go ahead and leave it at that, and give it back to the Speaker. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Okay, uh, since we're not going to have any designated committee chair for his approval or disapproval, so I'm going to move to opening the floor for debate on this proposed L.R. But, uh, any questions from the body? Uh, I know, at, this is the time to where you might want to, might want to implement something in here that we might have, language or something that you think that we've overlooked, that we can, you know, for amendments to it. Uh, if you got any more questions, go ahead, Secretary Okrow.
Another thing I forgot to point out, and I brought out earlier, is, uh, the reason I wanted this to be done now is because the outgoing senators know the issues, you know what's going on, you know what it's all about. If we brought this out in January, the new ones might not understand, and we might not get anywhere with it, but you guys understand. So, okay, Jay, I know that, how this transition is going to take place, I believe you shared
that with me just, uh, a while ago. The transition of the chairs getting into these positions, how is that all going to transpire, I think? Yeah, yeah, before the election. So, you, uh, there's some clarification that needs to take place, I believe it's, uh, Section Three.
Well, Mr. Speaker, your question is regarding to the implementation of this resolution once passed. The current language provides that the, uh, the branch officers, as I noted, will, will draft uniform bylaws that each committee would follow, and that's where most of the specifics are going to be. This L.R. would take effect December second, Monday, December second. So all of the currently existing committees would remain through the terms of all of the current legislators, including the outgoing legislators. Nothing would change until December second, and, uh, the secretary noted that we would have January committee officer elections, and that, that's something that that uniform set of bylaws would, would, would govern. This L.R. is only establishing that the committee membership would determine who the chair and the vice chair is. All the senators will be eligible for membership in all the committees, and the bylaws would state specifically when those elections would take place, and it probably would be most practical to have the committee elections very soon. January session would probably, would probably work. You would have an interim period between December second and the January quarterly session, so it would be, uh, in, in your judgment, as to whether or not to have even like interim committee chair between the December second and January quarterly session, but if it's workable, I think it'd be perhaps best to start the thing with a clean slate in January, as is the branch custom in policy, to have committee elections, uh, one-year terms. At one point, they were two-year terms. The branch has knocked that down to one, so that, that would be stated in the bylaws, whether we'd have one or two-year terms for the officers.
Uh, okay, Jay, uh, repeat that question again. I'm going to repeat that answer again, rather, uh, the one-year and the two-year. Kind of, uh, explain that a little bit.
At one point in time, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, prior to two thousand and seven, the committee chair served two-year terms, and there was a legislative resolution passed in two thousand and seven which, uh, changed the committee term, uh, committee officer term to one year, and the election would take place every January. I mentioned earlier today to the legislature that there was, uh, branch policy where the committees would be reorganized every January. That's the same L.R. that the reorganization, uh, was supposed to take place. That was supposed to be a decision by the legislature every January to revise its membership regarding to the committees, the chairs, potentially even jurisdiction, things along those lines, but the, uh, the two-year terms, uh, Mr. Speaker, that's now a one-year term. So it would be, right now, this language, Section Three, vests in the branch officers the discretion on whether to adopt, uh, multi-year terms or single-year terms. That could be clarified in this L.R. if the body so chose to clarify, but as of, right now, the way this language is drafted, it would be in the bylaws to determine what the terms of the committee, uh, officers would be, as well as whatever type of, uh, recall or removal language would be there. For example, an inactive committee chair could be subject to some type of removal. That should be spelled out in the bylaws, the, the uniform bylaws that apply. Quorum, things along those lines, that's all wants to be spelled out in the bylaws, so. Short answer would be, it's up to the branch officers under the current language. Um, if any legislators want to have the language firm in the L.R., now would be the time, or as soon as we get into the amendment portion.
Okay. Uh, floor recognizes Secretary Okrow.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think we don't need to complicate the issue, let's just leave it at, but yearly for now? Good thing, that way we don't complicate it, because the Speaker and Secretary's, the elections are every year, and so therefore, I think we need to keep the chairs at every year also. And anyway, I have a amendment to do later as we go. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, you, okay, by, uh, the reason why I asked that, right now, it's going to be up to the Speaker and the Secretary to come up with these bylaws, but with everybody's input, everybody's input, you're, you're more than welcome. And, and this bylaws of the committee chairs and the committee bylaws is going to be between now and December second, correct? Yeah, we're going to kind of sit down and come up with one, and, and it would take into effect, whatever, or do we have to pass that at a, but that's going to become law. It's up to us to come up with the bylaws and policies, right? Yeah, okay. Okay, go ahead, Secretary Okrow.
I think one of the things that we can make it easier is, uh, move up the, um, effective date to the January session. That way, the current chairs can keep their pay, pay rate until January. And then, when we reorganize back in, in January, that's when the changes will take place. That way, there will be no changes at all, and, and the current chairs that are, are leaving, those will be vacant, will leave them vacant until January, and then they, they slide into those different committees. I think that would make it, that would simplify it, I think, I believe. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that, I, I concur with Secretary Okrow, and keeping it that way, keeping everything current until the January session. And what I want to also use that as an example is the United States government. Senator Barack Obama, if he was a freshman senator, he couldn't be conducting the Appropriations Committee Chair at all. It's for senior senators. It belongs to them. They can only sit in those positions. There are certain committees in D.C. that senior, uh, senior senators can become chairs of. Uh, freshman senators, they have to, uh, learn, you know, the ropes until they are privileged to become chairs. And, I believe, I remember why we went from the two to only And, I believe, I remember why we went from the two to only one per year. Because it was to keep the chairs active as well, too. That they weren't guaranteed two years, if you guaranteed two years, you get complacent. If you're going year by year, you know that you might not, they might change the chairman in committees. The thinking and the thought is always the intent behind it. But I do agree with Secretary O'Kro that we keep it all the same until January, too, so there'd be less confusion. Yeah, comments on that? Again, no way we do really have to take off, huh? At 3:30? Okay. Thumbs up, thumbs down? If there's no more debate, we'll go to the amendments then. And I believe the floor is open for amendments. And Secretary, okay, go ahead, Senator Hux.
Thank you. Maybe I guess my, my own thinking, you know, gaming should be separated from economic development. Gaming, there's a lot of issues involving gaming. And, I think it would be best to be set alone. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Okay, anymore? To separate gaming as one of the, I think what you're actually saying is, separate that to be one of the standing committees? Any comments on that? Go ahead, Secretary O'Kro.
There's nothing in economic development right now, anyway. Because it kind of got passed around to gaming because it was kind of a hot potato. So Emmanuel ended up took the bull by the horns and took over. Nobody else wanted it. It's such a hot issue. I think if it stayed in economic development and you were the chair, that would work great. So maybe you better fight for that position from January. There's other, sure there are other issues, but, you know, because that is a special issue, and we can do something like that, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, because economic development, there's a lot of things coming from the executive, and it's on its way. And just thinking at the future, we got HC stores, and Arrow Creek Ranch, and, I don't know where the transportation part's gonna be coming in. There's like a lot of stuff that's gonna be compiled onto economic development. I mean, Canute said it best that the committees should, the committee members should jump on them. It, I mean, it might take a while before we see that. I mean, I'm kind of anticipating how it's been the last four years. Like, some meetings, we go in there, natural resource, where there's only like three of us, four of us, or sometimes one of, just one person throughout all of these meetings. The committee is not really, really active as a committee. And I seen that firsthand, and, I mean, we have to work up to it as being committee members. All these, all these, um, like, economic development's gonna be coming from the executive side. It's gonna get piled up on economic development. And gaming, and gaming's coming up, too. And gaming, um, we have to work on gaming, too. So I mean, I was just opinion, that I kind of foresee something coming, and I had to speak on it. All right.
Okay, Senator Tulig.
Mr. Speaker, Secretary, Mr. Body. You know, this is, I like this structure, truly good, you know? I'm not gonna be here to witness how it's gonna be, but, you know, maybe later down the road, I'll be able to see how it's gonna work out. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to try it out like this first. Just try it out like this, because you gotta test the waters first. And then, when you feel, if you feel that that specific committee is being overwhelmed with too many, too much business, too much legislation, then you can start defraying it from making it into a special committee, so, you know? I think you guys should test it out first and see how it's gonna be. And, you know, just leave it at that. Or, you know, if you do wanna change it still, you could still meet on it because I'm not sure if you're still gonna call another special session, Mr. Speaker. I know you kind of mentioned that before, before a lot of us leave. Because we leave on the 29th, is our last day. And then the holidays are the 28th, and the staff usually get the day before, off, 27th. And, you know, I said if you were gonna have one, you might as well have it on the 26th because Jeannie still has to get done with her personnel. And so, you know, but that's just a suggestion.
This is where, you know, as the economic development chair, you can delegate that authority. Delegate, and, you know, you're gonna have that committee backing you up. Committee meeting, and then, I believe, what we're trying to do also is that it's gonna be up to the, we're giving ownership to the committee chairs. You know, maybe something that, okay, you know, in the policy, maybe you're gonna have to tell them, hey, nah, I'm gonna give this to you, I'm gonna be busy with something else. You see, I'm trying to develop your skills. Develop your skills. Some of them, you gotta tell them what to do. Some of them, they can, oh, okay, I can do that, self-motivation. That's what we're trying to get to, to develop your skills, leadership skills. Somebody's lax. I learned. That's what we're trying to get to. We can always, it's a living, breathing document. And vice chairman, so you can give it to the chairman, vice chairman. So that's what we're actually trying to do. Yes, we do need a, uh, a committee, another special session for the personnel committee policy. I guess the only amendment that we need is from Secretary O'Kro. Go ahead. There's a suggestion, floor recognizes, Legal Jay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the suggestion, I would, it came to my mind as Senator Hux was addressing the body of these big areas, these important areas. And one came to mind, emergency and disaster services, which I thought, okay, that's kind of like a public safety. Public safety is of such magnitude and importance that it's going to fit naturally in judicial committee. My suggestion would be to amend the judicial committee jurisdiction to include the term "public safety." Now, I know it says "police," but "public safety" is something much broader than simply "police." We're talking about fire, ambulance, emergency services. And I know that executive shares the goal of wanting to be much stronger as a tribe in providing emergency services, so. More than anything, Mr. Speaker, that would probably clarify that that fits squarely in the judicial committee. And the other suggestion, it's already contained in the essence of what is described in the infrastructure committee, but specifically to use the term "highways" because it involves so much funding from the federal government, the transportation department. We reference public transportation, public infrastructure. Highways would probably be a good term to put in there to make clear that for the Crow reservation, the Crow tribe takes serious, and it kind of does involve public safety as well, the condition of our roadways.
So, uh, public transportation from the infrastructure committee, what you're saying is the public transportation and highway are public?
Yeah.
Shouldn't be an under judicial.
Well, no, highways should be just a term added to the infrastructure.
Okay.
Like you suggest, public transportation and highways, that would be great. And then to insert "public safety" in the judicial committee description, maybe after "police," perhaps, to make clear that.
In judicial, what was that again?
Judicial would, my suggestion would be to add "public safety" to the judicial committee. Because it fits with the idea of emergency services being provided by government.
Okay, I got you. Okay, uh, the floor is open for amendments. Go ahead, floor recognizes Secretary O'Kro.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My first amendment would be, of course, with what Jay just brought out, section two. After infrastructure, after public transportation, add "and highways." And then, on section two, the last committee, instead of budget, revenue committee, put finance committee.
Change revenue committee to finance committee?
Yes. And then, section five, at the end of the last sentence, this resolution shall take effect. I don't know how I wanna put that, at the January 14th session?
January 2014th session?
Yes. First day of January 14th session. And that is all, Mr. Speaker.
Any discussion?
Floor recognizes Senator Tulig. Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, Mr. Body, Jeannie said we forgot personnel.
Okay, uh, would you explain that, Jay?
Um, I would note, I think we have a privilege motion on the floor to amend, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Uh, use the question of privilege.
Okay. Hold on.
I guess personnel was supposed to go under health and human services, and it's not on there still.
Okay, uh, there's gonna be a discussion on that question of privilege, Legal Jay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The idea, and I had this discussion with the secretary and a few others, is that the personnel committee function may be best suited to be placed in, with the branch officers, meaning the speaker and the secretary. I noted this briefly during the 30-minute presentation. Personnel committee was one of the committees that was established after the initial four in 2002. And it created the personnel policy, which we have, which is in revision. It would seem to me, Mr. Speaker, this would be my opinion on the matter, that the branch officers are probably in a better position, day to day, to see the workings of staff, to determine where you have shortcomings or needs for improvement with the personnel policy. So I would suggest that the branch officers perform that function, but the body still reserves the authority on amendments to the personnel policy.
Okay. What he's actually saying, I can say it really, really short. It's an administrative duty to the branch officers. That's all I guess. To the Jackie, Sherry, Kenny, Jay, Leslie, and Bill. That's what the personnel policy, so it should be an administrative duty. So that's why it's not in there. Okay. So there's a second, need a second on the floor to Canute. Second by Senator Tulig, questioned by Senator Hux. Sorry, Senator Not Afraid, Lunchgrass. Okay, Senator. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your right hand. Okay, it has passed unanimously, 13, yes, zero, no, zero abstaining. Any more amendments? Okay, floor recognizes Senator Tulig.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members of the body. I make a motion to move to final roll call vote to pass a resolution of the Crow tribe legislature reorganizing and consolidating legislative branch committees with all amendments attached.
Okay, is there a second? Yeah, that was waiting second reading, right?
Yep.
In waiting second reading.
Yes. Who seconded that? Seconding Senator Stewart, Lunch, uh, Walla, need a question. Question by Senator Pretty Pan. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to wait second reading with attached amendments, raise your right hand. And we're going to final roll call vote. 13, zero, zero, 13, yes, zero, no, zero abstaining.
Tulig, black flag, yes.
Pretty Pan, black flag, yes.
Other medicine, renal, yes.
Not afraid, Ashpati, yes. Oh, yes. Oh, we got the last question, yeah.
Not afraid, Bitcoin, yes.
Deep Green, Arrow Creek, yes.
Hugs, Arrow Creek, yes. Stewart, mighty few, yes.
O'Kro, Ashpati, yes.
Uh, goes ahead. Bapua, yes.
Final vote, 13, zero, zero. Okay, the motion has passed. 13, yes, zero, no, zero abstaining. Okay, Dill said, oh, I got a few. I guess right now, we're gonna ask for a special session on the personnel committee policy. On the 26th, Tuesday, the 26th, before the holidays. And that 28th is Brother's birthday. Cook, 26, go.
Jeannie wants turkey dinner for lunch.
Wants to go to dinner? Turkey dinner, huh? Okay, get the 26th, we're asking for a special session. Okay, my announcement is this, oh, we need you to adjourn. Okay. Benefit package, we need to know who's gonna buy their phones. I believe the phones are $50 apiece. If you're gonna keep your phones, 50, get up. $50. Oh, for the iFives.
Oh, and these new ones?
Yeah. Okay, and then the MacBooks was $400, was it? If they wanna keep it? The MacBooks, I think, were like $400, it up.
These?
Yeah. Yeah. A thousand. Oh, they were $1,500 when we bought them, so if you wanna keep them, it's gonna be a thousand. So that's a buy. And so, if you wanna keep your phone, we can deduct that from your benefit package. So let Bill or somebody know. Let us know. Oh, Wi-Fi, all. The Wi-Fi, who's got Wi-fis? Oh, Yo-Yo? And then who else? A better. Oh, the Wi-Fi, yeah. How much does the Wi-Fi cost? Just hand in your Wi-Fi, that little.
Oh, the jet pack?
Yeah, the jet pack. So we might have, I think Lorenzo will want to look into that. Okay, and we'll give you guys a price. Benefit package, so let us know. And we'll coordinate that. And then, I have microwave dish, I guess Senator Not Afraid had that. And those were $400, right? You think they're still worth $400 for the microwave boosters?
Oh, yeah.
They're still worth $400. And you can deduct that from your benefit package. That's a jet pack there, a jet pack. We're gonna find out how much the jet packs cost. Lorenzo, but the microwave, microwave boosters, we set that up, but the branch bought them. Like right now and prior, there's no signal where I live. But with that microwave booster, I got signal. Jet pack, get it with the Wi-Fi, it helps boost. Go ahead.
Thank you. Microwave booster went down. I checked it. Trying to figure out, buy in the new one for my house if I have to return it. You want yours back, I'll go buy a cheaper one. So you make a deal. Save the labor and leave it up.
Yeah, I wanna look into that, maybe.
We're all kind of on the same page, and I overlook some things, we get something. If not, we need to adjourn. Okay, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Who motion? Jeannie, second by Noel, all those in favor of adjourning, raise your right hand.
Question.
Okay, there we go. Motion, adjourn. Thank you.